I'd like to call to order the May 8th, 2024 Borough Council Committee, the whole meeting. Would you rise for a moment? Yeah, rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of the flag. None?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin on the agenda, it is with great sadness that I announce the passing of former council member and avid community member, Harry L. Price. Mr. Price dedicated his years to the Hill School, joining the faculty in 1965 and returning from there, and retiring from there in 2000, touching many lives along the way. He served on Borough Council for four years, from 2002 to 2006, where he continued his reach to the community. Please keep the Price family in your thoughts during these difficult times. And from our mayor.
It is also with great sadness that I announced the passing of retired Pottstown Police Chief, James Earl Rogers. Mr. Rogers proudly served his country in the United States Air Force on active duty from 1954 to 1958, and reserves from 1958 to 1962, where he rose to the rank of Staff Sergeant. After serving his country, Mr. Rogers served on the Pottstown Police Department and was the Borough Police Chief from 1974 to 1991. The impact Chief Rogers made on his community will continue for years to come. Please keep the Rogers family in your thoughts during these difficult times.
Okay. Not yet. Infrastructure, Councilor Lewdowski.
The, they're in your packet.
Okay. While we have you, efficient methods.
Efficient methods, we held last month. We had Frank Hand ironically come in. We were talking to him about the future goals of the fire companies and what we wanted to do with ultimately consolidating the companies and the payrolls and finances. We're going to continue with the volunteers and the full-time employees. And he wants to promote the volunteerism and leadership within the companies. We've also talked about the water and electrical systems will be monitored electronically and automated. And that's it.
Thank you. Transportation, Councilor Prosser.
There was not a meeting.
Okay, how about ordinance review?
We mostly discussed, you know, assigned ordinance, the, of course, just our definitions and general licensing requirements.
All right. Economic Development, this is Lee Clark. Peggy, you there?
I am. Good evening. Sorry, I'm not in the room. Hopefully Monday I will be. I want to start this evening with a really much gratitude to paid staff as well as our clean team. So there is a very short video along with pictures that we did email so that you could see. So Pottstown's, Pottstown area Economic Development staff, Danette Wilson and Brett Treat, did go out on Friday to, in preparation of the beautiful part flowers that will be in the hanging baskets as well as the planters by removing those early spring flowers that Walmart so generously donated. And they moved it, they actually dug up all the plants and then went to the four, the entire 400 block and some of the 300 block and replanted. So I can't say enough about, this is well beyond the scope of their jobs. And I hope everybody will enjoy them. Although the rain was not great for the powwow, we were sad for the powwow in the car show this past weekend, we were happy for the flowers. So I just wanted you all to see those, and I hope you take note of just the entire effort to beautify those blocks. So the second thing that I want to talk about is, it is obviously spring in Pottstown, lots of great things happening this weekend, especially Saturday, promises to be quite an event in the downtown. I would maybe avoid Hanover Street for a little, for the first part of the day, maybe. The long-awaited Gaza Steaks, they have quite a social media following, are going to be open. But that's not the only thing that's going on, so we did make maps that will be available at Gaza Steaks so that visitors that may not be familiar with Pottstown and all that it has to offer, they can go and enjoy their steak sandwiches at various points throughout the borough. And I think that at least it's not going to be raining, it might be a little chilly, but they should be able to enjoy. There will be a ribbon cutting for Gaza Steaks. Well, actually, on Friday, we even start with a ribbon cutting for Enchanted Elements Apothecary, which is located on the 100 block, directly across from Borough Hall. We then move on to Saturday, there is a create and build cardboard event, which will be in Lot 1 on Hanover Street, which is the Children's Discovery Museum. 11:00 AM is Gaza's ribbon cutting. 10:30, just before that, the collective, the next-door neighbors or the couple doors down, is going to be having a ribbon cutting. And then there are arts in the park, and a fundraiser for the library, and lots of fun things to do. Unfortunately, I think we're going to see rain again on Sunday, so I hope you are all able to get out and enjoy these things. People's Security Bank and Trust, they are the second group, you may remember, we generously were receiving, we received money from Univest. We were able to do small business grants out of that. We now have a second round open that we had announced that opened on May 22nd. That will be open until Friday, May 17th at 3:00 PM. So if you have not gotten in your application, please do so. Anybody that was awarded in the first round is not eligible. If you put in your, if you were not awarded in the first round and have an application in, you will be considered again by an independent review panel. So that is being considered this evening. I, well, the discussion is happening this evening. Once again, Hobarts Run and Paid would just like to thank you for your ongoing support of this event. We hope you see it as a positive when we have 750 people in Smith Family Plaza, and of course, we are hoping for no rain. We already do have people committed to do Manitani, as well as Sly Fox and Kiki, all have agreed to be there again if you do give approval. Sponsors will be the first that are available off of the Pottstown Fed website, and watch for the announcement of when to come available. That is my report. And just to keep things moving along, I have nothing for Land Bank, there was really no action taken, and at this time, Land Bank does not own any properties for dispensation. They've all been, they've already been sold.
Okay, thank you. Human Relations, this is Levin Gooden.
Good evening, Councilors, Madam Mayor, Council President. Jewish American Heritage Month is celebrated during the month of May. We'd like to recognize the achievements, traditions, heritage, and contributions of Jewish Americans in our community. May is also Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. And again, we would like to recognize the contributions and influence of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, Americans, to the history, culture, and achievements in the United States. Mother's Day is a day to recognize mothers, motherhood and maternal bonds in general, and that is this Sunday, May the 12th. And Monday, May the 27th, is Memorial Day, and that's for remembering and honoring persons who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. The next Commission's meeting, May meeting, will be held on Tuesday, May the 14th at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. All are invited to attend. And we also have our January and March minutes are attached to the agenda, and they're also posted on the website. So if we didn't have a meeting in February, that was the night of the snowstorm, and we didn't have a forum, so, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, and from the library, Mindy online?
She's not here. She just asked me to post something, so it's in there.
Yeah, okay. Ricketts, Community, we have a report, anything from Kirkland?
Just that the continuing programs are the after-school program, the karate fitness center, the Bread of Life Shower, and the dance programs. I did want to point out that enrollment is 1,100 now, and the new enrollment for the past month was 20.
Good. All right, thank you. How about Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsay?
Can we put this on for Monday?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll move that. The agenda says Solicitors' General Discussion. I have a request from Mike Murray to bring him on early tonight so that he can make some other acquit. Mike?
Sure. I'll introduce it quickly while it's coming up. This is a land development plan for 305 High Street. The property is located at the northeast corner, the intersection of High and North Charlotte. The applicant is proposing to renovate the existing building to include an 11 apartment, 11-unit apartment building, retail area, and underground parking lot with associated sidewalks and patios. The applicant received zoning relief from the zoning hearing board in February to allow the commercial area to be 42%, to occupy 42% of the ground floor area, and to reduce the required off-street parking to 15 spaces. The applicant also submitted today an updated waiver letter. It's requesting six waivers. Those waivers include a request to receive preliminary final approval at the same time, to waive the requirement for certain plan details, and then based on the fact that the property is presently basically built out, a waiver of the requirement for the ENS plan, certain street trees, as well as open space, and wherever the applicant indicated that they would pay a fee in lieu of the street tree and open space requirements. The Planning Commission took this up and considered it at the April meeting. The Planning Commission did recommend preliminary final approval of the overall plan, as well as the waivers contingent upon them complying with those portions of the saldo, which would not otherwise be waived. In your packet this evening are the plans, as well as the relevant letters, and the applicant is here this evening, represented by Mr. Murray. I know they're design professional. And you want to add anything?
I mean, you did pretty well. This has been, I guess, in front of council a few times now, between the zoning and now the land development applications. The overall project is both 269 High Street, as well as 305. There is no external improvements to 269, that's why that one's not going through land development approval, that's permitted by permits. 305 only has a partial second floor, so they're building out the remainder of that second floor, that's why we're going through the land development approval. There's no ground disturbance proposed with regard to the project, other than maybe improving an apron that's going into the lower level of the building for the new parking garage that's going to go, providing 15 parking spaces for these units. We did present to the Planning Commission in April, they unanimously recommended it. You know, the waivers requested are mainly revolved around the fact that this isn't a raw land build, that we're working within the boundaries of an existing building. We did need a couple waivers related to street trees and open space, because there is none, it's fully built out, and we were requesting a fee in lieu of providing those. So if you have any questions?
Seeing none?
I have a question. Are you able to add any type of trees or greenery?
Is Jeffrey? I mean, I want to bring him up.
Sorry.
Joe, I called him Jeff, he's Joe. Thank you. I'm Joe Rosella, the project engineer. There are existing two mature, significantly mature trees on East High Street. They occupy the front of the building. Along the side, along North Charlotte, there are two trees that are currently in place, where we like to retain them. The ordinance makes a provision to add four more, which would require six. And because of the frontage and the narrow sidewalk along North Charlotte, we just don't have the space to do that. So we're looking to retain the trees that are there and seek the waiver for a fee in lieu of, for the, those four trees that we cannot install.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If there are another, this will be listed Monday evening for potential action.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that moved. Mayor's report, Mayor Henrick.
Yes, good evening. First, I would like to present a proclamation for the Public Service Recognition Week. In honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and local levels, whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and local levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees not, take not only jobs, but oaths. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service of the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants, including teachers, doctors, and scientists, trained conductors, astronauts, nurses, and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, I, Stephanie A. Henrick, Mayor of the Borough of Pottstown, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal hereto that May 5th through the 11th of 2024 is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and local. Set my hand today, May 8th, 2024. All right. So, thank you. All right, before I forget, I'm going to go onto my report, but I'm going to keep it short, because Lisa asked me to keep it short. So I have four tickets left for Big Ticket Night for Rotary, which is May 15th. You don't have to go if you don't want to. However, this is like one of the nicest events that we have for Rotary, and all of the proceeds go to a nonprofit. This year, it is Strive, who I also work with and mentor students in the high school and middle school. So the tickets are $120, and it's like bingo. So you have a number, and if you hold on, there's all these chances to win up to $5,000. So if you're the fifth number called, you get 100 bucks. If you're the 230th number called, then you win $5,000. Dinner's included, drinks, it's a great time, please let me know. Tickets are selling out, and these are, I think, the last four.
When is, when?
May 15th at 5:30 at Brookside Country Club. Tickets are 120, $75 of that is tax deductible. All right, so I will be brief. I did a lot last month and just got back from a visit on the West Coast with my family, so unfortunately, I missed all the great events last weekend. But I did want to mention that I went on a ride-along with Officer Cordis, and it was the day that it was like pouring rain. So most people were behaving, but it was still extremely busy, and I did a day shift with him. And we responded to everything from traffic accidents to missing children, domestic disputes, downed cable wires, there was a lot of that with the storm, noise complaints, unregistered solicitors, and even an investigation at the airport for an FAA violation. So it is really astonishing to me to witness the deluge of calls that come in on a daily basis to the police department, and the officer's ability to actually respond in a timely manner and like de-escalate situations. So I give, I have great respect to our officers, they deal with a lot. I also monitored the sweep of the PICO encampment, and I met with Social Services and learned that the plan from PICO was that the county provide two weeks of hoteling for those residents, and that was about it. Unfortunately, pets were not accepted, so residents that had animals could not go. And when I spoke to the residents there during, during the sweep, I asked them where were they, they were going to go after two weeks, if they actually used, you know, the two weeks of hoteling. And most of them said they have nowhere else to go, this is their home, and so they would either be going to Tent City or somewhere deeper in the woods. You know, this is really, this is not a solution, we're just kind of pushing people around the borough. And so I wasn't really thrilled with that plan, but it is what it is. I know people are working on it on a daily basis. And Lisa Chornita and I did multiple cleanouts, one of which, we did Memorial Park and, with the roller derby girls, and Parks and Rec. And we also did one of the abandoned campsites on Borough property. And I want to thank, give a, for the huge assist from the out-of-towners, Sherman Ellis and family, the Deviators, Bally Mennonite Church, and all the volunteers. It was at that cleanup that we were approached by WHYY, who was doing an article on homelessness. And because an article came out yesterday, I would just like to address that. So at that cleanout, I heard that reporter talk about a rumor that Kensington residents were being shipped to Pottstown. I had never heard this, I've heard rumors in the past, people always say, oh, well, they're, these aren't our residents, and that's the whole NIMBY argument, and we get that. Old news. So the reporter asked me to comment on it, and my comment to him was, this is the first time I have heard of this, I have no information to support this, and I'm going to contact the mayor of Philadelphia and contact her department and see if I can set up a meeting to see what's going on. So I got a call Monday from Philadelphia Inquirer. Apparently, another article from WHYY came out very timely yesterday before the nightly news of the Kensington sweep, which was today. So I would just, it seems a little suspicious that all of those things happened, and a story that was four weeks ago was reissued and retitled, just as, you know, fantastic journalism and media hype. So I gave an interview to the Philadelphia Inquirer today about the unfounded rumors that Philadelphia is shipping their unhoused Kensington residents to Pottstown. There's no proof of this, I am, will be meeting with Mayor Parker's office to set the record straight. And this is what happens when people spread rumors and don't do their homework and investigate for themselves, so.
Absolutely.
I would just like to say, there's nothing in the works that anyone is being shipped from Kensington. The only way that they can get a, it's a stranded traveler pass, which Philadelphia offers to people who are sick and have nowhere to go or are homeless, is if they can prove that they have family and relatives wherever they're going, and then they will pay for a bus ticket there. They can't just come here, and the argument that, oh, well, everyone's coming here for services? What services? We, we don't have anywhere to put these people, they're living in the woods, they're living behind the PICO Transformers, they're living behind the college. People aren't going to come here because there's no place for them to stay. So I just wanted to put that out there. And enjoy your weekend and the many ribbon cuttings. And that concludes my report.
Managers report, Mr. Keller.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everyone. First, I just wanted to give a little plug to the library, since Mindy wasn't here, she asked if we could plug the fundraiser that they're having on May 11th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They're having a 50/50 raffle with, with prizes, so I would suggest anyone who's interested in that, check that out. And, you know, I just really want to say, in my time working with Mindy, she's been one of the best library directors that we've had in a long time.
I agree, yeah.
She's very knowledgeable, she's got a master's in library science, which not a lot of people have, and quite frankly, we're fortunate to have someone of that, of that caliber. So I would suggest that anyone that's interested in the library, what they're doing, they have Board of Director meetings that are open to the public. The next one is on May 28th. So you really should get in there, see the great work that, that Mindy's doing, and give her the support that, that she needs to keep doing what she's doing.
Well, what do you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, um, May 28th is the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What time?
5:00 PM, they are held on the last Tuesday each month at 500 High Street.
Okay.
All right, so a couple updates for you here tonight, this is a little bit long, but a lot of good stuff. So the bid update that we talked about last month, we are working with Paid to distribute the required bid notifications to the property owners, that'll go out this week. And then if all goes as planned, we would anticipate holding the required public hearing for the, for the bid prior to our June 10th council meeting. So on Monday night, we'll likely be asking council to list for authorization to advertise the public hearing as required by the Bid Act. So stay tuned for that on Monday. And then just a general reminder, we do have our springtime hydrant flushing coming up, that'll begin Monday, May 20th, 2024. It'll be throughout the borough, it's expected to last five weeks. The times that we'll be doing that are between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM. So if you're getting water that's a little brown or rust-colored during that time, this is what the reason is, more than likely, and run the cold water for a few minutes until it's, it clears up. Doesn't clear up, call us, but usually that's what happens after flushing, there's some sediment that gets kicked up, and you just got to clear it out of the system. Tonight, I also have a couple parks updates for everyone. So construction has begun on Chestnut Street Park, that started yesterday. They started with demolition of the playground and other components. They're expecting that this will be completed at the end of July, and it'll include a new playground and also a walking path that'll go around the park. Construction is also ongoing for the Memorial Park Bridge replacement. The abutments are now scheduled for delivery soon, and then shortly thereafter, we'd be able to take delivery of the bridge structure. So we are hoping that within the next couple months, we'll have that bridge back in place in, in Memorial Park, which is certainly a long time coming. The construction on the riverfront park waterway that you've probably noticed if you're walking the Schuylkill Trail, that is complete in terms of the embankment stabilization and the armament that's happening down there to prevent future erosion. And the replacement bridge is being fabricated, and that'll be delivered in the early fall, so we're hoping to wrap that up in November. And then lastly, for the parks, there was a kickoff meeting with the Environmental Consultants for Pollock Park, and that's, they're going to begin the process to secure a civil engineer for that project and start to move forward with the remediation plans to get, to get it cleaned up. So that's also really great news. And then a couple pressing issues. Um, and then a couple pressing issues that we've, uh, been, uh, dealing with the past couple of months, I'm really happy to share that we're making some significant progress on addressing several of these issues that have been brought to our attention by citizens and businesses. Um, particularly regarding regulations on recovery homes, assigned ordinance, and litter on borough sidewalks and streets. So first, I'd like to touch on the proposed ordinance for recovery homes, we, uh, we talked about this, uh, last month. This'll be up for a vote on Monday night. And as some of you may be aware, the previous ordinance on this matter faced legal challenges, which led us to pause our enforcement. Um, this was actually be required by our insurance carrier, uh, until we could enact the new ordinance that would align better with the Fair Housing Act. So what that means in plain language is that we currently have no enforceable recovery home ordinance at the present time. Um, so it's important to keep in mind that the Fair Housing Act limits regulation by the borough, since the act designates recovery, recovering addicts as a protected class. So it prohibits municipalities from imposing restrictions on recovery home uses that wouldn't apply to other residential uses in the borough. So we understand that there's a lot of concerns, um, by our citizens out there, and while the proposed ordinance that we have may not satisfy everyone's desires, um, due to the federal regulations that we have to contend with, what is proposed is better than having no, uh, no ordinance that's enforceable in place. Um, you know, it, it will not be perfect, but it will at least ensure that it's lawful, um, meets the Fair Housing Act, and also safeguard, um, the people in those places through regular, uh, life, s- health safety inspections. One other point on the recovery home ordinance, um, we also need to have a ordinance that's in compliance with the Fair Housing Act to remain eligible for grants that we receive. So for example, uh, the community development block grant allocations, we receive about 250,000 each year. If we don't have an ordinance that's compliant, uh, we may not be, uh, qualified for that funding in the future. So we'll have more on that Monday night. Uh, second, we conducted a thorough review of our signage, uh, regulations. We examined some successful downtowns that are, that are nearby. Tonight, you'll hear our proposal to adopt a new window sign ordinance, as well as ordinances for, um, flag banners and inflatable, uh, tubes. Uh, we're recommending that we adopt regulations that are pretty much identical to the borough of Phoenixville, with some enhancements that will ensure they fit our community's needs. So this will provide us with a proven framework of an ordinance, uh, while also addressing concerns from local businesses and residents about the perceived strictness of our current regulations compared to successful towns nearby. So just to summarize, the changes won't require permits for these types of signs, and it'll make enforcement more complaint-based, which will simplify the enforcement, reduce the administrative burden, and offer better clarity to businesses, quite frankly. Um, so I think by focusing by the, on these types of signs, initially, we have other signs in the sign ordinance that we want to work on, but by breaking this out, um, this allows us to move forward more expeditiously on these simple issues, while we take a more comprehensive look at the sign ordinance overall over, over the next few months. Um, next, I wanna talk a little bit about some of our efforts to tackle litter, littering issues in the borough. We've implemented several, uh, measures, one such measure up for discussion on the agenda is an ordinance requiring all convenience stores, whether they're existing or new, to install and maintain a trash receptacle on public sidewalks at their own expense. Uh, so we help, we think that'll really help to cut down on some of the litter that's being, um, strewn about town when people are exiting the stores and they're discarding of a bottle or, uh, a wrapper. Um, additionally, we've allocated more resources this year to street sweeping, so we did do a recent street, a recent sweep in key areas like High Street.
S's for your birthday.
Yeah, too many S's.
Yeah.
Like High Street, the downtown area, and as well as, uh, other thoroughfares throughout the borough. So, uh, we did focus on kind of the, the core area between, um, Beach and High Street, Manitani and, um, Washington. Um, and then, uh, lastly, we have, uh, now launched our signups for our Adopt a Street program. So, um, Zach's gonna bring some things up on the screen here to show everyone where they can go to sign up to Adopt a Street. So if you go onto our homepage and you pull down the residents tab, you will find Adopt a Street there, it's the second one. Um, click on that, we will add some more, um, photos and things eventually to it. But here it gives you all the details about the program. Uh, as well, there's a Adopt a Street interest form, so we ask that anybody who's interested, fill out the interest form, it's just very basic information about who you are, what your group is, um, what area you're looking to, um, clean up. And then that way, we'll be able to get back to you to, um, ask you some more questions and give you the other appropriate forms that, that you would need. Uh, we also have a guidelines and waiver, so this is, uh, will have to be signed by all, uh, participants in the group, and we're making this available so that it can be signed, uh, online. And then also, there is a agreement that we'll have with the Adopt a Street captain, so each area, uh, will be, have to have a designated captain. That will kind of manage the group and make sure that they know what the rules are, um, where to put the trash bags, you know, what kind of trash bags to use. And I don't know if, um, if you had a sample of those tonight, if not, um, we're gonna be using a purple-colored trash bag, so that way it'll be very identifiable. Whenever you see the purple-colored trash bag, you will know that that is an Adopt a Street trash bag. The borough will be providing the trash bags, good gloves, the pickers, as well as some safety vests to the participants that are, uh, helping us in this effort. And then also, we have a draft of a sign. Do we have that ready? That, um, we just wanna run by everyone that will be installing, um, on, on, on the blocks. So this is just a generic, just generic name, uh, for the, for the team. It'll identify the block, um, who they, who they were adopted by, and then there'll be a QR code on there to join the Movement for Cleaner Neighborhoods, which will take you to the Adopt a Street interest form, where you can adopt a different section of street if you would like. So big thanks to, um, our assistant manager, Zach Nelson, for working on this, as well as Public Works for providing input. Uh, we really do think that this is going to help keep our community members engaged to maintaining our streets and promoting a clean environment. So if there's any comments or questions about this program, uh, feel free to get in contact with administration. Yeah, sure.
Does it have to be a street, or can it be part of the, like, part of borough property that's like a trail, or?
Um, really haven't thought of that, I guess it could be, I mean, I would say send us your inquiry and let's see if we can make it fit.
I mean, it would make sense for Edgewood Cemetery to be like.
Okay.
His name on it, right?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, that too.
The cemetery.
Yeah.
Anything to promote cleanliness is certainly lovely.
We could talk, we could talk about that, yeah, I would encourage, like, get in touch with us, um, but yeah, we could, we could certainly look at options for that as well.
I'm so glad this is coming, I feel, ah, I feel like I just had a baby. That my baby was born just now.
With a QR code on it.
Um, exactly. That I've shared with the borough. I feel, I, thank you, guys, I, it's good to, like, I just said, blah, and I just, and you guys just took it, you just took it away and just did it, I, it's beautiful, I, I, my vision is coming through, I got more visions. Standby, watch out, I got, I got more, I got more.
That's, um, you know, one of the.
That's what happens when you drive for September.
That's one of the benefits of, uh, having, uh, some extra staff and having an assistant manager.
Absolutely.
It allows us, and people ask, well, what is this position going to do? It allows us to implement new programs, um, that we would've had a difficult time implementing in the, yes, without the extra help, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Okay.
Sorry to sit long.
All right, cut next month's short.
I will.
All right. Okay, you're gonna tell us about operating a mobile farm market.
Yes, so I believe we have, uh, Max here with Trellis, uh, for tomorrow. Uh, they, they have a grant to operate a mobile, uh, farm market in various locations across the borough, so, uh, Max would like to give everyone a brief presentation on this. Go for it.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much for having me out here tonight, um, and in light of the news today, thank you guys all for your public service out here, um, so trying to do some good work. Um, so like you mentioned here today, uh, we're talking about a potential pilot project, uh, for a Pottstown mobiles, mark, mobile market. Um, so we can go down to the second slide. Um, I apologize, just in reference, this is meant for a different platform, so some of the functionality is a little bit limited here, but, uh, the lead organization with this project is Trellis for Tomorrow, so for those not aware, they are a local nonprofit that does a lot of, uh, garden programming and youth, uh, development. Um, and with that, they actually have a, a good, uh, urban agricultural presence here in the community. Um, so my role here, I am with the Best Route, I am a private contractor, I am a formal mobile market operator.
All right, you're fine, Matt.
You're fine.
Okay. Uh, former mobile market operator, and then since then, I have expanded into this space here, assisting nonprofits, developing their programming. Oh, no.
You tried to zoom in and that's what it told us, all right, yeah, never mind.
Um, but the ma- the main goal of this project that we are doing here with Trellis, uh, was to design, plan, and pilot a mobile market in the Pottstown area. Um, so for those who are not aware of what a mobile market is, in essence, it is a vehicle, uh, to bring fresh, healthy, uh, food directly into communities, uh, generally those, uh, that have limited access. And, uh, typically, these programs focus on local products, uh, fruits and vegetables predominantly. Uh, typically can be paired with nutrition education and things like that. Uh, so when we first started this project, we were trying to get an understanding of, uh, Pottstown. Uh, so first thing, uh, most folks will do is look at the demographics, so looking at the different income levels, we can kind of see the different tracks of where, um, higher or lower income areas are. And one might assume that with a project like this, being with a nonprofit, we are looking to serve, uh, the lower-income tracks. Um, but might see there, there is the higher levels of SNAP that kind of corresponds with that, but if we go to the next slide after this, we can see, uh, the rates of healthy food access. So this is actually defined as, um, individuals who have access to a grocery store, who have, uh, a vehicle, um, and/or walking access. So the areas that are actually darker blue have li- more limited access to fresh, affordable produce. Um, and with that, in the next slide, we can see a little bit of what those different access points really are. Um, and then on the next slide here, we see the different SNAP retailers, um, so over time, there's actually been a, uh, a large drop in the number of SNAP retailers, um, in, uh, the borough of Pottstown here. So on the right side, that is what it looks like today, and all the red dots are actually convenience stores. So these are stores that you might, uh, be able to purchase with your SNAP dollars, but the quality, um, and the access points might be a little bit more limited than a full grocery store. Uh, so when we think about what, what does walkable access mean? Um, we, that is typically a 10-minute walk, uh, walking at a leisurely pace of about three miles an hour, so this is what we ideally want to have, that everyone in their community has fresh, affordable produce when they can walk out their door and have it be accessible, uh, with limited barriers. So when we look at the next slide, we can see all of the different charitable food access points. Uh, it actually covers a good swath of Pottstown, so the majority of the town actually has good coverage in this respect. Similarly, SNAP access is quite widespread, but again, the quality of those different access points might be a little bit more limited. When you look at both the north end and the west end, they tend to be red dots, which again are those convenience stores, uh, which, uh, are a little bit harder to do your full, uh, grocery shopping at. Next slide. Um, and then finally, looking at the supermarket access, I want to apologize, I'm out of breath. Um, this is typically where, uh, the, the purple areas, th- those are the spaces, the residents that actually have access to a full grocery store, who can, uh, readily walk out their door and access groceries. Everything else has no access, so when we look at the walkable access gap, that's what we're showing there in that bottom slide. All the dark areas have no walking access, um, as well as the larger the circle, the, uh, more dense the population, as well as the darker the color, the more SNAP usage. So we can use this to kind of help us identify where we might want the market to be. So all that to say, um, Pottstown has a demonstrated, uh, access, a lack of access to real, healthy foods. Uh, not only through the mapping that we've done, but the Pottstown Area Food Collaborative, um, has done, shown this in some of their, uh, needs assessments as well. Um, we also know that the lack of access to real, healthy foods, uh, has a negative impact on the community, um, typically in lower-income communities, um, and these result in negative health outcomes such as obesity and, uh, lower health outcomes in that regard. Next slide. Um, the physical barriers will prevent folks from accessing real, healthy food, so if you cannot physically get to the market, you will never have that access. So without the access to the stores, you will not eat as healthy, and then ultimately, mobile markets are an effective tool for bridging that gap and providing real, equitable access to fresh, affordable produce. Um, and then from here, this is where we kind of segued into trying to figure out where this market could potentially be, so looking at the different gaps, we evaluated a different number of sites, uh, throughout the, uh, Pottstown area. Uh, typically with all these locations, we are looking for, um, host partners, things of that nature, people in the community who are willing to work with the market, promote the market, as well as a safe place for the market to be. Um, so in that, in the end, uh, we settled on four locations that we are looking to pilot, uh, for the season based on our bandwidth, um, with Trellis. So two of those locations, uh, are planned to be in the borough for, for, uh, this pilot season if things move forward. Um, so a little bit of what the sample schedule was looking like, we are, uh, suggesting to do a 12-week pilot, starting in August, doing a soft opening at the, uh, Pottstown Farmers Market that weekend. Typically, uh, out, uh, markets will be two hours long, operating Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Um, and the idea being that this, the markets are strategically scheduled to be after hours, 'cause one of the main goals of this program is to engage with Trellis youth participants. And this will be a, an engagement opportunity for those students after, uh, school hours, so that we can continue in the summer into the fall. Um, and then basically, this is how I got in touch, uh, with everyone here today, I had reached out, uh, trying to, uh, get some understanding and, uh, on the permitting guidance, basically. Um, so all the boroughs, all municipalities, all have different guidance, different language, whether it's a special, uh, events permit, solicitation permit, transient, uh, retail permit potentially. Um, these all, all these different factors go into kind of deciding where we can be and how, uh, we operate. Um, also with a project like this, given, uh, the fresh product, potential food demonstrations, uh, health department comes into play, as well as SNAP, uh, licensing at the federal level and, and state for, uh, background checks and et cetera, so everyone's involved, uh, with this type of project. Um, uh, when we consider the food, like I mentioned earlier, uh, we're looking to source predominantly locally with these products. Um, produce, uh, fresh fruits and vegetables would be the, uh, focus of this prod, of this, uh, pilot season. And then in years, uh, two and three, expanding it to eggs, uh, frozen meals, uh, other items, uh, that are kind of desired, the value-added items and things like that. Um, we would be sourcing predominantly through Trellis's, uh, garden program, so some of their, uh, urban agriculture, uh, that they have here in Pottstown. Uh, but they also have, um, a farm out at Lundale Farm in South Pottstown, where they have an agricultural center, as well as some additional cold storage that we will be able to leverage, uh, to kind of make this project happen. The market itself will accept multiple forms of payment, whether it's SNAP, FMP, as well as cash card, mobile payments. Uh, there's recipe bundles, incentives, try to make it fun, inviting, and enjoyable. Uh, ultimately, the project will be evaluated based on three goals of improving access, working with Trellis youth, and, um, integrating their different programming. Uh, little project timeline of where we're at today, basically, if we're moving forward, we're going to have to start finding our partners, finding our locations, solidifying agreements, and doing outreach. And here we are today. Thank you for the invite.
You can talk quite quickly.
Yes.
I only had 10 minutes.
Are there any, uh, questions?
Just stay up there for a little bit until they, yeah, no, I don't want them to ask questions.
Oh, you don't have a question?
No, I don't have a question, I, he said anything, he wanted to leave, I, somebody might have a question, just stay there, okay?
This is kind of like a, a pop-up farmer's market, like, it won't be permanent?
Um, correct, yeah, so basically, we operate out of a vehicle, so you show up with the vehicle, you show up for the show, unload, set up, you have your market for about two hours, set up, clean up, like you were never there, and then you rinse and repeat every week, in theory.
That's nice, something like that.
The kids are growing these?
Um, yeah, so actually, that's, that's one of the highlights, is that working with Trellis, the youth are doing a lot of the garden programming, and now they're growing it. They don't, they're giving it away, so now it's the next mechanism, how do you do something with it, so you get to kind of bring, bringing economies and, yeah, let them sell.
That's nice.
Sorry, one more question, is that gonna be in conjunction with the CSA program, or is the CSA program, like, going away?
Uh, I think the, I'm not gonna speak to that, they're, they're different, so I, I don't believe that this has any impact on that.
So the reason why we asked Max to come in and present tonight is because, um, we couldn't quite figure out, this use didn't kind of neatly fit into our ordinance, so we think that we can, um, allow the use through a, uh, conditional solicitation permit, um, but we just. just wanted to make sure that council was okay with that, or if they had any requirements that they would want to see on that. I mean, from my standpoint, I just want to ask that the food is going to be sold, not given away, is that correct?
Correct. The intention, that is a market model, so that the folks are either paying cash, cards, SNAP. The idea is that then you would find leverage, matching dollars to double the SNAP dollars in essence. So while a customer is paying, the actual cost out of pocket is minimal in that respect. It is not a giveaway by design.
Okay. And then you'll be selling it on private property, like not on the street unless it's a part of like an event that has a street closure?
Correct. That's why we designed it so far, is working with private partners. But if the city or the borough is willing and able to, wants to have it set up, park, open street, that's more than possible.
And so far, you have the farm, your, as a location, your, and what other ones?
The complex, the YWCA complex, building up by the, that was the other one that we had targeted within the borough that we were going to reach out to, given a number of the factors.
Okay. And so you have those two locations, are there any others that you have yet?
There was a number of other ones that we pursued, but for this pilot season, those were the two within the borough that we were going to target first. If they didn't work out, I would hope that we could pursue some of the other options, but that's, those are the first two targets.
Okay, great, great. And you said you have a grant for this, or?
So I can't speak to that specifically, so Trellis has a number of different grant fundings, streams, and things of that nature. And then they hired us to kind of implement and do this.
I was just curious who, like, who funded it?
I think the majority of it's an ARBA grant, but I don't know the specifics.
Yeah, yeah, interesting. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Listening for Monday, to see if we should go forward?
Yeah, and you know, you can either have the option that you let staff kind of figure out how to regulate this, or you can tell us how you want to regulate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the Borough Taxi Way, did we have that?
This won't be ready until June.
Okay. We'll scratch that. Inter municipal agreement, oh, this paving Mervine Street.
That's correct. So this is the paving of Mervine Street. This is a joint project between the Borough and Lower Pottsville Township, to ensure that we can pave the full width of the street without leaving a seam in the middle, which can just cause ripidity and just kind of future maintenance issues. So we have an agreement with them. They're going to be the lead for the project. There's an estimate of $65,000, half of which, or approximately $32,500, would be the borough's share for paving half the street.
Okay. Any questions? Seems like a reasonable cost.
Yes, very reasonable, we thought.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday. One-year contract extension with Park.
I think you...
Oh, no, I missed, crossing guard agreement.
Yes, so this is the crossing guard agreement with All City Management. That agreement expired. And it's kind of an odd thing, but if you recall, by state statute, the borough is required to contract with the crossing guard services for the school district. And then the school district has reimbursed the borough for the cost of these services. So we've negotiated with All City Crossing Management to come up with another three-year contract that would have an average increase of 4.51% per year. And the school district tentatively agreed to this proposal. All City has signed the contract and is ready for your consideration on Monday.
Okay. If there are no questions, we'll list that for Monday. Now, the contract with Park.
So this one's also not ready, and that'll be moved to June as well.
Okay. How about a local match for Park?
That one is ready. So we're requesting a resolution certifying the local match for the operating, the operating assistance grant that we receive from the FTA is approximately $1.79 million. The local match is $120,000, which will be paid by Montgomery and Chester Counties.
Okay, put that on. Okay, permission for alcohol in Riverfront Park?
Yep, not more than I have on this, other than it'll be June 18th from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And that's pretty much what they're requesting. I think we've done this in previous years.
Yep, so we'll probably approve it Monday night. And operate a beer garden in Memorial Park for June?
Correct. They're asking for June 21 through 23, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Okay. No questions, we'll list that. It's for the rumble, how about permission for alcohol in Smith Family Plaza for the Fate Unblown?
That's correct. So they're asking for that on September 6th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in conjunction with that event.
All right, followed by the street closure for Fate Unblown?
Yes, and that'll be from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And it'll close York, between York and, close high, between York and Hanover Street.
Street closure for church service for Victory Christian Life Center?
They're asking for June 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Washington Street, I believe.
Yeah, I think it is. Okay, list that. Street closure for All American Soapbox Derby?
All right, the races are back, the 14th and 15th, with a rain date on June 16th. They're asking for the closure 7:00 a.m. Friday until 7:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Good. Now, on to land development for 305. We already accelerated and did that. About the building permit violation fees, Mr. Hovey?
Yes, President Nguyen. Presently, the fee schedule has certain fees for different types of building permits. In the event that someone starts doing construction work without a permit, given the increased work that that requires for LNI, the fee schedule escalates that fee. Essentially, it doubles it up to $250. So if, for example, a permit fee was $150, somebody starts doing the work before they get the permit, and then goes to get the permit afterwards, that fee would go from $150 up to $250. It is my understanding that there's a proposal to increase that ceiling up to $500. That would be achieved through a, an amendment to the fee resolution. And again, in terms of examples, you're just raising the ceiling. So for the $25 permit fee, it would go up to $50. But for your higher permit fees, it's going to raise the ceiling as far as what that escalation is.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll list that for Monday. Okay, once again, Mr. Hovey, the amendment to Chapter 20, Solid Waste.
Yes, this came out of Ordnance Review Committee, and Justin summarized for you sort of the policy considerations behind it. I provided a letter at the end of last week, which is part of your packet, that goes over the proposed changes. For the benefit of the public, though, this would apply, this would be an amendment to Chapter 20, Solid Waste. It would be intended to sort of address neighborhood convenience stores, as that's defined under the zoning ordinance. You know, these are considered some of the highest producers of litter in the borough. Under the proposed amendment, neighborhood convenience stores would be required to have a mounted trash can outside of their store, which they would be responsible for emptying either once filled, or at least once a day. The proposed ordinance amendment then sets standards for what the material and capacity of the can would be. Overall, it's a rather straightforward ordinance. Unless anyone has any questions or objection to it, we can list this for Monday evening for potential action.
Seeing done, we'll list that. Next amendment is Chapter 27 zoning for the sign regulation.
Yes, this also came out of Ordnance Review Committee, and was summarized by Justin. Provided you a letter with it, as well as an outline for the proposed amendments. Just to go over all of it, though, and for the benefit of the public, the first part of the proposal addresses window signs within the downtown, downtown gateway, gateway east, and gateway west zoning districts. The proposal would clarify exactly what a window sign is, and that's going to be anything that's either attached to a window or placed within 12 inches of the window, designed to be viewed, you know, from, from outside the building. The proposal would add window signs to the list of exempt signs. This means that permits would not be required, and window signs are not going to be taken into account when the zoning officer is calculating the overall signage on the property. The hopefully intended benefit of that, with eliminating the required for permitting, is that it's going to shift more to a complaint-based system for enforcement. In order to effectuate this change, because there's been issues in the past as far as whether signs are permitted or not permitted, to clarify, all window signs that are in existence now would essentially become non-conforming and grandfathered in. So businesses that have window signs right now, again, whether they got permits or not, would be able to keep that signage up, you know, until it had to be replaced. Any future signage, any replacements, would have to comply with the new proposal. Window signs would have to consist of words or logos, without any type of backing that's going to impede your ability to see into the business. And from a policy standpoint, to try to, you know, create more activity, appearance of more activity and vibrancy in the downtown area. And then signs that aren't advertising the business itself, but rather individual products, like Red Bull, Coca-Cola, Lay's, those types of things, would not be permitted. As far as how much signage you can have, I think, as I indicated, well, essentially what the proposal is, is that you can have up to 25% of your window area per frontage, covered by window signs. If I recall correctly, Phoenixville allows 20%, so this would actually allow 5% more than what Phoenixville currently allows. If you have multiple windows, any one of those windows, or multiple windows, could be covered up to 50%, as long as you don't exceed the overall 25%. The proposal includes several exceptions to those regulations, though. One namely being that health and fitness uses would be able to essentially frost up to 50% of the window to create some privacy for the use. Industrial uses, as well as vacant commercial uses, could cover the entire windows with either opaque wraps or else imagery, but no text or business logo. Again, this is intended to try to address any type of blight issues in the downtown. As well as, each business can have up to three square feet of signage that relates to basic business information, such as hours of operation, contact information, what type of credit cards they accept. It also exempts out temporary signs, in the respect that you can exceed the 25% with the temporary signs. You know, in practice, these would be types of things that if a bar wants to advertise for a particular band that's coming in that week, you know, they could put that additional signage up, you know, which is intended to not be on a permanent basis. The proposal also in parts two and three, then, addressed banner flags. It would clarify, these are the flags, at least as we conceive them, you know, the flags that are on a pole, you know, can, can move with the wind. It would be a maximum of one per commercial unit. That means that if a property had multiple commercial units, each business could have one flag. And then as far as the inflatable tubes, it'd be one per property, assuming they had enough space out front for the setback. And the setbacks can be based off the height of the inflatable. These are basically, you know, the Dancing Man-type tubes like that. So if it's going to be 10 feet tall, they've got to have at least 10 feet setback, you know, from the right of way outside the front of the property. Does anybody have any questions at this point? You know, if not, this will be listed for Monday evening for potential action.
I have one question, about the transparency, or the frost of the windows. I'm sorry, I didn't have it pulled up. Can you say the percentage again? I get it for the gym, I just can't picture it in my head, and I'm concerned of, I wouldn't want windows to be like completely covered up with the frost.
Sure, the frosting, the only business that would be able to have the frosting would be a health and fitness, for example, like a gym. All other uses, it's going to have to stay transparent, so that you can see into the business.
But the frosting's 50%.
Yeah, correct, right. So just be sort of the bottom half of the window, but the top half is still going to be, to be clear. The only other exception is going to be an industrial use. You know, again, to hide from the public, those are the types of businesses you don't want the public to be, see what's happening inside the building. Likewise, if it's a vacant storefront, rather than having people look in and see an empty store, we would allow them to cover it up with some type of imagery or solid, solid color.
Thank you.
There's nothing else, we'll list that for Monday. Okay, upcoming board vacancies. We have one three-year term for the EAC, two five-year terms for R. We have Mr. Hilton and Ms. Purdy requesting reappointments. Land Bank Board, two three-year terms, per request, pardon? Land Bank, Culp, Ms. Culp is requesting reappointment, and Ms. Vanning. And now it's time for comments from citizens.
All right, first up, we have Tom and Iris, please.
I have to say that.
Ihas. Ihas.
I say that, too.
Whoever corrected that. I'm very used to it, but thank you. I have some handouts that I'll just leave here in case you don't want them, but they're for everybody up here. Just a recap of the season, the Winter Warming Center season, as well as the season for the entire county. I was in a meeting today, and with Your Way Home, service providers, and all the groups that provided shelter this past winter, whether Code Blue, Code Blue Plus, or seasonal, like Beacon of Hope. And I could just like that guy, but he left. I just wanted to mention a few takeaways from that here in the community. So there were 10 individual agencies that provided emergency sheltering, including access services who provided emergency hoteling as needed in Montgomery County. Those 10 places were in Norris Town Plymouth Meeting, Lansdale, Lower Marion, and Pottstown. There were 11,424 Code Blue beds filled in Montgomery County for the 83-county declared Code Blue nights. I gotta breathe. Pottstown Beacon of Hope, the recap I handed you is not a final version. I put it together over this past week, but ran out of time. The numbers are correct, but there's some editing tweaks I need to make, and the overall formatting, as you can see, one of the sides is printed off, and things like that. But yeah, again, I just want to give a very high level of some of the stats from this year. So there's a ton of people to thank in the community, so I know I'm going to forget people, both in writing and up here. But I want to start by thanking the Pottstown community for supporting the mission, Pottstown leadership, council, Mayor Stephanie, borough manager, our staff, our financial supporters, our volunteers, our drivers, those who prepare the meal every single night, and so many others. We had five different churches host this, this season, and one of those, one of the churches allowed us to use their facility as a check-in and pickup location every night. We had over 250 volunteers, I think over, I forget the number, so I'm not going to guess. We, we got 60 individuals, vital documents that they needed to move forward, such as ID or birth certificates. We filled a bed 3,829 times. We served 152 unique individuals. And just as a reminder, or to those who don't know this already, the only folks that are allowed to come into Pottstown Beacon of Hope during the winter, during our operations, are people who can prove, proof of Pottstown residency prior to homelessness. So the 152 we served were from within the community. We are still very invested in our plans to build and operate our Pottstown year-round shelter, and expect to finally close on that property shortly. There may be some of you up there who know more about that than me, but we're hoping that that, that the title, and deed, and all those things that we've been waiting on for so long clears up, and we can take ownership very soon. Over the summer, I'll continue case management with our guests, or with those who are living outside now, who weren't able to get stability. And it'll go more from like broad case management to intensive case management with one person at a time, seeing them through as far as, as far as we can. Assisting and working with other organizations and agencies to continue the safety plan with people. Stephanie mentioned the Pico sweep, which I agree with. I mean, there is natural gas there under high pressure, can't have campfires, right? But, but it is, we're shuffling people around. But it is, we're shuffling people around. So, we just continue to work with different organizations, agencies, you know, the borough and the police whenever we can, to try to help keep everybody as least upset as possible. We were happy that we're still working with the Rickett Center. We're going to continue to provide transportation. Every Monday and Wednesday, we'll have three local pickup points at different encampments for showers and laundry services that they provide.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll continue community awareness events. We'll be at the Juneteenth celebration. I just signed up for the Adopt a Block, so excited about that. We have a cleanup June 29th. If anybody from council has the suggested area of cleanup, we'd be happy to hear that suggestion. Otherwise, we'll find somewhere.
Good cemetery.
And I heard somebody's got that. And again, we're just hoping to celebrate the ownership of the West High Street property very soon. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I did forget to add, if you've already inquired about Adopt a Block, we have your name, and we'll be emailing you shortly. So, for anyone that's already inquired, we'll get back to you in the upcoming weeks.
Okay. Do you need my email?
Yes.
Okay.
No, we haven't. All right. Next up, we have Doug Slick, please.
Good evening, everybody. Very brief remarks tonight. I have two happy things to mention. Both are in the future. I think this Saturday sounds amazing, and I love watching our town continue to present such positive events, and such great will, goodwill, and good visuals, and good media coverage. The second one is, I think the ordinance you're considering about putting a trash can in front of a convenience store sounds incredible. I can't believe there hasn't already been such an ordinance, but it's a logical thing, right? If you buy a candy wrapper, you need someplace to put the wrapper. There are... Today, in Kensington, Philadelphia, there was a clean-out of an encampment that has been planned for about a month. Most of the residents had already moved out before this morning's actions. And the mayor's office has specifically denied any plans to ship people anywhere, let alone here specifically. I, myself, for the last year, have managed to force myself onto the awareness of most of the advocacy organizations here in Pottstown and also across the county. And nobody has been able to give me any data that would support that being a planned activity. I just found out today that actually one of the people who advocates for homeless folks here in town was working a back-channel connection with Mayor Parker's office, and they also denied any plans for that kind of activity, of actually specifically shipping folks up here. I know there's been discussion both on the state level and on the local level of government. And also, I have to say, some of the folks in the advocacy community have expressed concerns as well about this, but at the moment, as far as I'm aware, there's no data supporting any of it. I may have more to say about this when there is some data, or when people start showing up. I hope not. But until we have some kind of hard evidence, I think we want to sort of take our foot off the gas, and let's see what happens. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay. And, yeah. Regular councilors, your comments. Esther Prosser.
A little damp with the boys, and I enjoyed the powwow this weekend. It was good to see Ron Williams back in action.
Esther Bannick?
I can't remember which month it was. It might have been last month, but I want to thank Stephanie for getting me to go out when you volunteered, I think it was with Strive, and you got me to go roller skating.
That wasn't my mayor report, which I cut out.
That's okay. I told her to cut it short, so she cut me out of it.
That's what happens.
You get what you asked for. But it was wonderful. I haven't roller skated in, like, 20 years, and I used to love it, and it was like I was 15 again. So, go roller skating, just don't break anything. So, thank you for that. I'm sorry I missed the powwow. I'm sorry it rained on Sunday. But I hope to continue to do it. Every morning before work, because I need some exercise, I've been walking High Street. About 8 o'clock. I've been pleased with what I saw. I walk at night, too. There was a couple of things that made me a little uneasy, but for the most part, business owners came out and said hello, people on the street said hello. So, I'm going to keep doing that, and I was pleased to see there was not trash. Because I've gotten complaints about overflowing trash cans. The last couple of times I walked, I've not seen that. So, I hope to see you out walking. That's all.
Councilor Abadinsky?
Nothing.
Councilor Lindsey?
So, this weekend, I went to the powwow. I went to the Colonial. And, oh, and we had a shred event that parks erected, and donations were suggested for Go Forth. And I did, you know, I was running to the cars, getting donations, and it was nice. Did that, and let's see what else. I can't remember nothing else. Oh, that I did. But if I did, I just... If I remember, I will let you guys know.
I forgot the frozen spoon.
Oh, yeah. You're going to come back to that. I went to go see my son two weeks ago, visit him, and he was in good spirit. I also talked to some other Marines there also, and he gets... He deploys on this Friday, so I got to... So, it was good that I got to see him. So, I'm a little bit more at ease as a mom, because he's more at ease. Like, he's okay with going on this, wherever he's going. He won't tell me, because I guess he thinks I'm a... Probably will. I will get a plane and try to go out there, find him. Yep.
We have an airport.
I'm that mom. So, again, I will ask that you all keep all the service members, not just my son, but all of them, in your thoughts. Even if you don't pray, pray. If you don't, ask to your universe or whoever. Just keep them in your thoughts. And that's about it for me.
Councilor Minosk.
Ellen, May 18th, the Edgewood Cemetery is having a very important event that we do. It's not a cleanup for once, okay? What it is, is one of our volunteers, Kelly Fenstermacher, who knows everything about everyone who's in that cemetery, okay, and knows where everyone is. What she does is she organizes a living history tour. And what they do is that this tour, on the 18th, is focused on impactful women in Pottstown's history. So, there will be people... So, she will... We will have actors dressing up and telling stories, and telling the story of the historical figures, the female historical figures. And as I look up here on this board, I see powerful women. And I see, and I... They had to be trailblazers. And these people who came before you were trailblazers. People like Dr. Shepherd, the first female doctor in Pottstown. And President Wynn is very familiar with that, because him and his wife sort of adopted her grave, because she is an impactful person. There's another shepherd who was one of the first schoolteachers in the 1900s. It's amazing what schoolteachers, female schoolteachers, had to do, okay, in the 1900s, what they had to be. So, it's fascinating. We have three shows. Three shows. The 3:00 show is sold out, but there are plenty of space at the 4:00 and 5:00 show. And I would encourage everyone to come in and learn about some of the strong pioneering women of Pottstown that paved the way for some of... For these powerful women on this dais right here, and in the audience here. So, it's May 18th, 3, 4, and 5, but you can't get into the 3, the 4, and the 5. And it's, what, $20 a line? $20 a pop?
And how do you get... How do you... What are you going on, line?
How do you get tickets?
Yeah. There you go. Okay.
Oh. Lane? Facebook.
Oh, Facebook. Okay.
Okay. And we will have them, and that'd be great. But I encourage people to come down. It's really positive, and it puts Pottstown in a very positive light. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Kirkland, are you there?
Nothing. Thank you.
Oh. Okay. Mayor Hager?
Lisa.
Okay. Let...
Lisa wanted to say something.
No, no. I just wanted to see if I could ask a question that I forgot to ask. I had somebody inquire about the lights above the businesses and how they get those, and I couldn't remember.
Oh, you're talking about light up High Street? That would be... They would want to reach out to paid.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yeah. They're managing that program.
Okay. Allow me to end on a good note. Last week, there was a grand opening for the Goodwill store. Came back to Pottstown at a different location, but took over part of the... No, it wasn't Wyse Grants area, or Giant area, and filled it with a lovely store. And some of us were out for the ribbon cutting. I was there early, and I got to talk to the Goodwill management, some of their corporate people. And one of my ongoing questions is always, you know, how did we, Pottstown, do, you know? And what could we have done better to make your movement here more enjoyable, easier, whatever? And I did get their oral comments, and mostly favorable, but it was followed up in writing. And I got this from their chief financial officer. Says, "Good afternoon, Dan. First off, a big thanks for joining our Goodwill team this morning as we celebrated the grand opening of our new store in Pottstown. It was a year in the making, and we couldn't be more pleased to now have a presence in the Pottstown community. Secondly, I want to take a moment to comment, commend, and the entire borough team for how efficiently and kindly you worked with us on this project. From the very beginning, when we reached out to confirm zoning for our retail and donation acquisition, to applying for permitting, to inspecting our build-out, everyone on your team was professional and so responsive. And in my role overseeing real estate expansion and remodels, I work with many municipalities. None have come close to your level of service. You were all so welcoming, and for that, we are grateful. Please pass this along, our thanks and appreciation. Signed, Colleen McOffliffe, Chief Financial Officer for Goodwill Keystone area." And I want to give you a copy for posting.
Thank you.
Very good. That is it. Meeting adjourned.